Chad, you good? I'm sorry, I did that preemptively, I'm sorry. I always like to make sure you're ready to go. Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table at the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine in nature and are voted on in one vote, in one motion. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda, again, for up to three minutes. All right, and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Any councillors have a conflict of interest on any of the agenda items in which they may vote on this evening? Seeing none, all right, we will move on. First up tonight, we have a proclamation for Maine Pride Month. Whereas the city of Waterville strives to be a community that is welcoming and supportive of all its members, regardless of race, gender, age, sexual orientation and expression; and whereas Waterville supports the legal nondiscrimination protections for LGBTQ Mainers, passed in 2005 as one of only 20 states in the nation to include protection for discriminations based on sexual orientation, gender identity and gender expression in employment, housing, education, credit and public accommodations; and whereas the Maine Pride Month is an opportunity to recognize hard work and be supportive of the thriving Waterville LGBTQ community in fighting for their rights and acceptance and acknowledge the ongoing work of the citizens of Waterville to advocate for equal rights; and whereas the city of Waterville thanks the Health Equity Alliance and all of their volunteers and sponsors in the community for working incredibly hard to make Waterville an engaging and sustainable Maine Pride community. Now therefore, I, Michael Morris, as Mayor of Waterville, Maine, on behalf of the city council and residents of Waterville, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Maine Pride Month and urge all members of our community to advocate for equality. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our city manager report.
All right, ladies and mayor. So first, some really good news from the city of Waterville. We submitted an application for what they're now calling Congressional Directed Spending, also known as earmarks, to all three of our congressional offices, Collins, King and Pingery. We were notified by Congresswoman Pingery about a week ago that our ask for 1.5 million to fund all of the downtown vision projects has been selected by the congresswoman to move forward to appropriations. Even more good news on top of that, we were notified within the last couple of hours from Senator Collins and King that they have both selected the project also. So we have an extremely high chance of having this 1.5 million in funding to do our downtown vision projects now, which is a big deal for the city of Waterville. So thank you to all the city staff involved, particularly Michael Hall. This is Waterville's first successful CDS application, and it's a big one, so we're very proud of this and really happy to begin this funding and to get moving on these projects. Downtown Vision Plan is going to be coming to fruition. We're doing the Appleton Street Project also this year, then these projects in the years to come and much more beyond that. So this is transformative for the city, so thank you to all and thank you to our congressional representatives. Just a quick budget update, we have worked with assessing to better kind of hone in on the overall picture and where we will be with tax rate. The picture has gotten better, depending on what overlay comes in at. We're looking at between, as the budget currently stands right now, between a 1.5% to 2% increase to the tax bills, which is considering inflation, a pretty decent number. So just some updated numbers also. Over last year, percent increase, the city's up about half a percent. The school's about 4.5% and the county, 26.9%. So that was a big one. So considering also that county increase, to have an overall increase to our tax bills of 1.5 to 2 has been some successful work. So thank you to everyone involved there, and there's more to come obviously on budget tonight and at our next meeting. Have some staffing updates. Our city assessor, Paul Costangue, has given official notice to retire from his position as city assessor effective on June 27th. Paul's had a 30-year career here as our city assessor, so thank you to Paul for his decades of dedication and hard work to the city, we really appreciate it. His knowledge and dedication is clearly evident, he's a leader in his field and we will miss him. So thank you to Paul for all of his years of service, we appreciate it. You don't see many 30-year employees anymore. In light of Paul's retirement, our deputy assessor, Ally Broschu, who's been with the city for over 10 years, will be promoted into that position as our city assessor. She has proven herself time and time again over the years, is ready and able to step into this position, we're very proud of her. And so she will assume that role on July 1st and maybe have as long as a career as Paul, but we're not sure, 30 years is a long time, so we're excited to have her moving up. Lastly, I just want to also recognize Assistant City Manager Bill Post has given his notice of resignation effective June 20th. I'd like to thank Bill for his contributions to the city over these last couple of years and to wish him well in his future. He's going to the city of Augusta, and I know Bill and I will keep in touch through our small, close-knit Maine manager community, so thank you, Bill, to your service. And just thank you to all of these individuals and all of our staff for everything they do, we have some real accomplishment here, so thank you to all. Next, I want to welcome a couple new businesses that have come into our downtown. Over the past couple of weeks, we're very excited to welcome Oliver and Friends Bookshop to our downtown, they're at 150 Main Street. We had a ribbon cutting for them last Friday that was very well attended. I know a bookstore is something that's been on a lot of people's minds for quite a while in downtown Waterville. We have one, they moved here from Belgrade, so welcome to Oliver and Friends. Also really happy to welcome Old Soul Supply Company at 103 Main Street, this is the old Jorgensen's. They opened last weekend and are offering a, we'll call it eclectic, variety of vintage goods and is well worth a visit if you haven't visited them yet. Also, I just want to add, this just happened within the last week, on Main Street, up Main Street out of downtown a bit, a coffee house has opened in the old, I believe, Record Connection building. They just opened this past week, they had a great piece in the Morning Sentinel a couple days ago, so we welcome them. Then also, and all of these businesses continue to add to our vibrant new downtown and rejuvenate our city, so thank you to all of them for choosing Waterville, setting up shop here, and the city of course pledges to be a good partner and to help them be successful however we can. So thank you to all of them, please pay them a visit. Next session of city managers' open office hours will be back in the south end at the Muskee Center, June 20th, 11 to 12:30, hope to see everyone there. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out to my last session at the library last week, some new faces there, great to see them and some good and engaging discussion. Lastly, just a reminder to please enroll in our city mass notification system, some great updates there, you can kind of tailor to what you want to see, waterville-me.myfreewords.com to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, councillor comments and/or committee reports. Any councillor comments or committee reports this evening? Councillor Gagnon?
I had a question for Brian. I got a call just before I came to the meeting about, from a constituent, about the issue of who needed an easement, remember that issue?
About Leo St. Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Leo this afternoon.
Okay, okay.
And we're on the same page and moving forward.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Green?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to congratulate everyone in Waterville who's graduating this week or last. I was really thrilled to attend last week the graduation ceremony for adult ed, and that was 28 people who got their diploma. Thursday, our high school graduation occurs and we also have the alternative school, so just congratulations to everyone, students, teachers and parents alike.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, I did have the opportunity on Saturday to go to the community carnival at the George Mitchell School, helped by the Parents Teachers Association. I had a great time, I did a couple of things there. We got the, some donations from Waterville Opera House, and we had the kids come and dress up and take photos and selfies and things like that with the mayor and stuff, so they had a blast doing that. We also put together a coloring contest, which we're going to give away some prizes, and we had quite a few number of kids take the time to color some little coloring pages that represent the city. Those will all be on display at City Hall during the month of June, and we will pick a winner in July, so that was super fun. It was a great event and extremely well-intended, and we had great weather for it, so I saw quite a few folks here today that were there. So yeah, it was a great event, so anyone else?
Councillor Kleepack.
Councillor Kleepack.
Yeah, hi. If no one else, well, I'll offer a committee report. We had the Resiliency Committee met today, and it was, we had a report from the Community Development Officer, Michael Hall, who gave us an update on the grants that he had been working on. Unfortunately, due to perhaps crossed wires, a previous grant that had been submitted that was funded for the city of Waterville through the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future, that is going to provide LED lights for City Hall and the police station, precludes us from being awarded the Community Action Grant that we had submitted, that the committee reported on for the heat pumps for the Hall School. So that was a bit of a setback, but we will be able to resubmit for that grant, whether it's that same project or something else, later in the fall. And then discussed other potential grant opportunities and then said goodbye to Bill because he was the City Point Person in that committee. Next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd, for community members interested.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, any other councillors? All right, fair enough. Public comment, now is the opportunity to come and speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda. I have the list here. Ray, Mr. Howe, if you would like to, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I got this little brochure, and it says "Public Safety." And I like to find out who is a public and who's not. I've been here for 83 years, and I get no, I don't get any safety. I'm in a position where every day we go out, every day, every time we go to our little court, we're in danger. There's cars coming, trucks coming everywhere.
I'm sorry, his granddaughter and my niece almost got hit by somebody the other day, which is not going to be okay.
For point, just so, where are you located again?
Lublow Court.
Okay, thank you.
I've been here, what, twice, two or three times?
I just, for the people that are watching now at home, just for context, thank you.
So, I mean, I don't understand this public safety bit, where I'm not considered a public after 80 years in the city? You know, I've been, like I say, I've been here about three or four times, and I've been given, we'll take care of it, and we're going to look into it, but nobody seems to. I get no, I get no response. I've called, I've left messages, I get nothing.
And I've left messages with you.
I mean, I don't like being like this, but you know, I gotta do something, it's a public, it's not safe. Every time we go out of our court, there's traffic coming everywhere, and they shouldn't be there. It's private, it's a little private court, and the people go on basically a treasure chest, and then you have the city coming through, where their trucks flying through, not driving through, flying. And we don't know where they're coming from, because there's just so many different ways that they can come in. I mean, don't you think that something should be done there?
Or could you direct us to somebody who could do something?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know we're not supposed to speak back in public comment, but Ray, I know I've been out before, we talked about the signs, the signs did go up. I know, I'm happy to come out again anytime to talk about more solutions. I know signs are often ignored, so...
Seems to become a thing.
Yeah, I'm happy to come out again, we can talk about some other things. I know we did the signs, maybe they're not working, but again, happy to come out, talk about more things to do. It is a problem with the traffic with the neighboring business and them, I think, ignoring some signs, which is going to be hard to enforce. But again, I'm happy to come out and talk, you know, anytime.
That would be great, and if it could happen before the next time my niece comes to visit and has to drive out in that kind of traffic, that would be really great.
Something for within the next week, if that works.
That's it?
If you have time to meet sometime within the next week or later this week, I'm happy to come out.
Another week, we'd probably be in the hospital.
Well, what's due in the next couple of days, I'm available.
Anyway, it's just frustrating.
Sure.
63 years, I pay taxes, and I, I'm like, you don't even exist, I'm not even a public, you know, part of the public evidently, because this public safety don't seem to be doing it.
I understand. All right, well great, well we'll connect you with, we'll have Brian come out again and we'll take another look at it and let's see what else, what else we can come up. So I appreciate it, I'm sorry for the frustration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Patty, do we have anybody online that wants to speak on public comment tonight?
No hands raised.
Okay. Anyone else that didn't make the list? David? You were here in time to make the list, I'm just saying, I'm just kidding.
David Johnson, Ward 4.
Yeah.
The sign thing made me just think of something. Back in December, there was a big storm, you probably remember it, a bunch of trees went down over by Seton.
Okay.
When you're coming down Lincoln Street, where it goes from 35 to 25, that sign's been gone for six months.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone actually knows about it, but just throwing it out there.
Okay.
I also want to mention, brown-tailed moth season is here, they're going to be turning into moths in the next few weeks, probably. He might know better.
Oh, he does?
Yeah. Some lights being shut off might be a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, July.
Yeah.
They have to pupate first. The caterpillars are out and they're, they have a wild ways to grow yet, and then they go into pupation, which is the cocoon. They're not going to emerge as moths until July, but right around July, we will be trying to do some public outreach and let people know...
So we have some time to plan, to get some lights off.
Yep.
Great.
We got about a month.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else before I close public comment? Okay, moving on to consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Patty, can we get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Kleepack?
Yep.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of 7 in favor and 0 opposed.
Okay. And we are going to move to new business. Before we do that, we are going to just do one slight change this evening. Can I get a motion to move number 8 executive session from the last two now?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, okay. And then, can we get a roll call for that, Patty, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Kleepack?
Yeah.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
No.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of 6 in favor and 1 opposed.
Okay, and then can I get a motion, please, to move into executive session to discuss personnel matters, 1 MRS 4056A?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Kleepack?
Yeah.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Gagnon?
No.
Councillor Finch?
Yes.
Councillor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of 6 in favor and 1 opposed.
Awesome, thank you very much. Folks, we'll be right back, this should only take a few minutes, so I apologize for the delay, but we'll be right back. This is, this should only take a few minutes, so I apologize for the delay, but we'll be right back.
Second.
We got a roll call on that, Patty, thank you.
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Gagnon?
Yes.
Council Finch?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. All right, we are moving right along to Resolution 110-2024. Actually, I'm sorry, Patty, thank you. Can I please get a motion to read by title only?
Motion to read by title only.
Thank you. And can we get a roll call for that, please, Patty?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Gagnon?
Yes.
Council Finch?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. And now we are moving to new business, Resolution 110-2024.
Authorize the issuance of a liquor license to Randolph Jones doing business as the Playhouse at Waterville Station.
Okay. So, I'm going to move that we...
Well, we have to move to adopt and then...
Okay. Move to adopt, yes.
Second.
Okay. Now, with this one, we need, this is a, after further review, this was someone for a one-day license and not something, so I can entertain, please, a motion to postpone this indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepack?
Yeah.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Gagnon?
Yes.
Council Finch?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
I want to know more. And I just started moving before I could ask the question. It went from being a liquor license to just a one-day event thing?
May I, if I may?
You may, of course, thank you.
We misinterpreted the application, and this is actually for a one-day civic event. And it doesn't require council approval, this is a one-day license which routinely is approved by the police chief and internally afterward. So it doesn't require council approval.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Vote of seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 111-2024.
Authorize the issuance of a craft fair permit to Randolph Jones doing business as the Eighth Square LLC.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Is Randolph Jones here? Does he want to promote his craft fair? Okay, no? Any comments from the council?
I'll just say, I believe that this is part of a plan to have events at the former Railroad Square, which is now the Playhouse. And maybe, yeah, the Eighth Square. Anyway, I think the vision is to have, okay.
I'm here from...
You are, okay, wonderful.
Oh.
Do you want to come and tell us about it?
Please. I like a good craft fair.
My name is Stephanie Erwin.
Hi, Stephanie.
And I'm with Aqua City Actors Theater. A-CAT was a 20-year presence here in Waterville. And we had a theater in the center. And we closed because of COVID. And then we lost our space in the center when they rebuilt the New Arts Center. And now we're at, we're at the Playhouse at Waterville Station, which is where Railroad Square used to be.
Awesome. Well, great. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that update.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Gagnon?
Yes.
Council Finch?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 112-2024.
Authorize the issuance of a craft fair permit to Jackie Forlito doing business as Waterville Creates.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Is Jackie or anyone from Waterville Creates here? This evening? Seeing none? Any councillor comments, concerns? Okay, Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepack?
Yes.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Gagnon?
Yes.
Council Finch?
Yes.
Council McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 113-2024.
Authorize a declaration of intent for bond issuance and general fund reimbursement.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Brian, do you want to kick us, just...
Sure, so we had the public hearing previously, but you have a list of projects totaling just under $5 million in your packet. We also have our bond advisor, Mr. Ranigan is here tonight, as well as our finance director, if there are any more specific, sort of deeper questions on that.
Okay, I'll open it up for council comment. Any councils comment this evening? Council Gagnon?
I'm wondering... This isn't really a lot of money, the $5 million, when it comes to bond, I don't, I don't think, compared to the other bonds. And I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be doing more than that. Particularly with the condition of the roads that we have in this city. You know, the last time I asked about the roads, and asked, you know, if there was a, you know, a list of what really needed to be done to all of them. I was just told, oh, it's just going to take millions and millions to fix all the roads. And I'm just wondering if this isn't the way to go. I think there, I think roads are more valuable than some of the stuff even that's on this list.
So the list of road maintenance is extensive, you're right. And I think there's, we can easily say there's $30 million of roadwork out there in the city. The issue we have is coordinating with utilities and others to be able to keep things at that pace. What we're doing this year was actually pushing them a little bit, because it's more than we've done in quite a while. So I think we would like to do more roadwork. The issue is working with sewer water, et cetera, on making all these projects feasible in that short amount of time. So, yeah, there's certainly a lot more need out there. And for future years, we'll be needing to do more of this. But for this year and the next year, this two-year cycle, this is what we agreed to with the utilities for roadwork that they were able to absorb in this amount of time.
Yes, please.
But if we, if we borrow more, you know, now as part of this package, I mean, it doesn't have to be spent.
At, under, correct me if I'm wrong, $5 million, we have 18 months to expand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Council. My name is Dick Ranigan with Northeast Municipal Advisors. There are spending rules that come into play at various bonding levels. Without getting into detail, basically, you're looking at, in this case, that we're looking at an 18-month spend down of these projects. You have, generally speaking, up to three years in which to spend funds. But there's a, certain percentages that have to be met at six months, 12 months, 18 months, et cetera. There was a bigger plan on, on the table earlier in the $6.2 or $3 million range. I know there's been discussions at various levels within the city, and that they sell down at the $5 million level this year. But you can't go out, for instance, bond, and then park that money for eight years and spend it and do it in one bond issue. You really need to go out, as is planned, maybe every couple of years in a cycle, to start to catch up on all these projects.
Could we afford more, city?
That always comes down as a budgetary question, it's a difficult one. Where you're weighing about capital projects along with operational expenses, be it both city and school. And so that, that becomes, your, your question as to what is the affordability, but...
I guess what I'm...
It's easy to, if you take a look at your financial statements on a historical basis, the city and schools have over $100 million worth of infrastructure. That's at original cost. It could be in the several hundred million dollar range. If you're not doing renewal and replacement of at least 5% to 10%, you're falling behind. So obviously, there's infrastructure out there that needs to be addressed. And over the years, I think Waterville has struggled in doing that. I've been doing the city's bond work for over 25 years, and it always comes down to this discussion as to what can we afford? What can we do now? What should we be doing later? And it's one that you, you as elected officials need to wrestle with. But clearly, municipalities are not spending enough to keep up with infrastructure.
Yeah, I was really getting at whether or not it hurt our, hurt our bond rating if we, you know, borrowed too much, whatever.
The city's bond rating is A+, and it's not driven because you have a lot of debt outstanding. The A+ rating is kind of mid-range, and really, the demographics of the city kind of bring it down a little bit. Typically, main municipalities that issue on their own are right in the double A range. So one of those rated a little bit lower, A+ is still a good rating. But if you were to elect to go out and borrow 10 or 15 million, your rating would not be impacted adversely. In fact, they may look upon that as a positive that you're catching up. But it, it really always becomes one of what can we afford and what are we willing to spend?
May I ask a question?
Yes, Council Klepack.
And, and, just purely from the perspective of the yields on the, on the 10 and 30-year bond, you know, like the, the, the direction of the bond market and the likely direction of the bond market in the next year, two years, three years. Yeah, I know you're not a soothsayer, but... Does it make sense to be bonding more now? Or would, is the, the cost to the city of issuing bonds going to become more favorable in a year or two? Would you guess?
Council, actually, that's an excellent question, and I am asked that a lot, and I do not have a crystal ball.
Yeah, well, I know that.
However, we're currently in what I call a 3% market, 3% to 3.5% for a 20-year issue. About two and a half, three years ago, we were in a 2% market. I remember days back in the 80s when we were in 11% market. The 3% market is a good market in which to issue bonds. Do I see rates going up? I don't know. Will they trend down? I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah.
I just have a question regards to the, on the bond list, the downtown vision project and beautification. Is that the same thing as a congressional directed spending? So is that 1.5 million, or is that something we can remove from the bond list? So that is to do the, we have a small gap for the Appleton Street project... So that is to do the, we have a small gap for the Appleton Street project this year. So the CDS funds will not be, you know, this year, so that's to get Appleton done this year.
Okay.
So we would request to leave that on so we can get that project done this year. The CDS funds will be for the remaining projects in future years.
Okay.
Counsel Gagnon?
I'd be inclined to, if we, if it's possible at this stage, to, you know, add a million dollars to this. And if you cannot spend it within the next couple of years because of utilities and whatnot, it's my understanding, it can be spent within three years. And, and I'm not sure how I do it, I'm suggesting, but I would like to do it.
Christine, I'm sorry, thank you. Christine, can I have you sit at the city's neck? Can you speak to what that may or may not look like from a payment perspective? You know, I know that when, when you gave your report last, at the last meeting, we spoke about this, the bonds, and we have things that are coming off. And the, the cycle of when things come off and when we add things to kind of keep a flat, kind of level keel as to having spikes in making payments. And I believe it was your recommendation that we do an interest-only payment and not pay the principal until the next budget to keep. So what would be the impact to the budget if we were to add a million dollars to this particular bond?
Well, I think running a new amortization would definitely tell us better, but it would be concerning to me, depending how we spread that out and what that impact would be. We've talked several years now also about the school and potential projects that they have coming up in a few years, and what financial impact that will have to the taxpayers. The reason we, I recommended what we did and worked with Mr. Ranigan was to try to maintain a stable level.
Right.
And keep the taxes as steady as possible, because we knew we had some wage impacts and other impacts. We didn't want to spike that debt. So I would be concerned to say, yes, I think it's a good idea, while I believe in the investment in capital and infrastructure and the long-term sustainability and growth of the city. I think probably the next bond, when you have more definitive of what the school is looking at, may be the time you can get out in front with the utilities, have those conversations, and come up with a solid plan for the borrowing at that point, and structure it in a way that it will not necessarily impact the taxpayers in a tremendously negative way.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Before, I would just like to respond to Counsel Gagnon briefly. The, the three years that I mentioned, that, that would be, the entire money would have to be spent by then. Again, we have the spending rules every six months, so it would have to stop being spent now as well, too. And to, to go along, if that money were 20-year bonding money, it would add the first year about $300,000, that million. So, but we, no, it wouldn't be that much, but we, we would need to run a new schedule to see what that impact would be. But it would be an impact to the tax rate.
Thank you. Counsel Green?
Yeah, so my understanding of, of the bonding plan for the city is that, you know, we are keeping on top of this. So this is definite, most definitely not the last paving bond we're doing. And as soon as we can do another bond, we will, in order to keep up with it. But, but that keeping the debt service even is a priority so that it doesn't impact the taxpayers. So I think we definitely have more work to do, and it's important that we keep on top of it.
Thank you, Dick. Christina, yes, thank you.
I just would like to make one final comment, too, about the partners for the infrastructure that Brian spoke with. I think in, in fairness to them, to give them, because they do not have the funding to take on some of those new line work and repairs that's very costly, and to give them a head start on it. It's a, it's a great point of discussion for now, since we have the road plan, the sidewalk plan. But working with them long-term so that they can plan two, three, four years ahead and have the money when we bond, I think is helpful.
And just to point of that, we have built a five-year plan that we've shared with them, and we'd like to build a 10-year plan also, so that we have a lot of planning into the future. So when we do talk about bonds in the future, we already have a list that's out there that they know we're going to be working on and to better plan for the future, which is something we haven't done before. So those five and 10-year plans are being developed, and I think that's going to help us a lot when it comes to planning for the future of our infrastructure and how do we get there.
Excellent. Yeah, I, no, I agree. Yes.
So on this bond issue, how much is being spent on city streets?
Totals are 2.9.
2.9.
Any other comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, can I, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel, Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yeah.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you. Now, moving on to Order 114, 2024.
Approve the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $4.4 million, $999,000 for capital projects.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Just to recap, so this is just simply to move the process forward for the, what we just discussed in the previous resolution. So, for the folks at home.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to point out that it's technically 3.7 for street and sidewalk total, 3.7 million. There's two line items for street and sidewalk paving, and then street and sidewalk reconstruction. And added together, that is 3.7 million, not just 2.9.
Perfect, awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. Can I, Patty, can I get a roll call, seeing no discussion?
You have a hand raised from the public?
Please.
Nancy Sanford, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Go ahead, we can hear you.
And I think this is the proper time to ask this, but forgive me if it's not. I was sad to hear about Bill, gosh, why can't I, the Assistant City, Bill Post.
Oh.
Leaving, because I think he's been excellent. And there was discussion about the fact that some people feel that we don't need an Assistant City Manager. And I'd just like to say, well, first I'd like to ask, is the Assistant City Manager job still in the budget for next year?
Okay. For point of clarification, this is not the moment for that question. So I will ask you to hold that question, and we'll bring you back in probably 20 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else, Patty, online?
No other hands raised.
Okay, so can I get a roll call, please, for the bond issuance, please?
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
Counsel McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to Order 115, 2024.
Appropriation of municipal and school operating budgets for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. This is the first reading of our budget. Brian, could you kick us off, please, is to, just to kind of give us an overview as to where we are and whatnot? And let's, we'll have the stuff.
Sure, so as I said in my report, we are looking at currently about half a percent, 0.47% increase in the city side over last year, 4.55% with the schools, and the county came in at 26.9%. Also, as I said in my report, and in staying down with assessing, we are looking at, with current projections, valuation, overlay, et cetera, of about a 30 to 40 cent increase in the mill rate, which is between 1.5 and 2%. That's kind of where we are right now. Another important number to note is about $116,000 equals 10 cents on the mill rate. So for every $116,000 you cut or shave off, that's another dime reduction on the mill rate. So for, for council's discussion. I'll also note that council was provided, if you are interested in sort of a menu of options of cuts, obviously, there's more out there. You can, you can do whatever you'd like. There are another potential, about $340,000 in reductions that the council could sort of pick and choose with. But of course, that's not inclusive of everything that could be out there for, for reductions. So where we are right now, as the budget stands, in meeting with assessing, we're at about a 1.5 to 2% increase over last year. Looking at our, our competitors or our peers out there, this is honestly a very good number. Augusta just went up over 3% this year a few weeks ago, after a large increase they had last year also. So, and that's been the case in a number of, number of areas. So that's kind of the broad 30,000-foot picture, but if there are any more specific questions this time, Christine and I are here to answer those. And of course, this is the opportunity for discussion and/or entertaining potential amendments to the budget. This is our first reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we open up to the panel, I will give the council the opportunity to start to discuss this. Counselor Green?
So, yeah, I, I think maybe this is where your question comes in, Nancy. I agree with you that the Bill Post has been, done a wonderful job as Assistant City Manager. When we hired him, we were in a very different position. And I know a lot of us do want to keep, all of us want to keep taxes as low as possible. So I'm going to move that we take $80,000 out of the administrative line for that position and create another position that's, will accomplish the same goals at a lower cost.
I will second the motion.
Point of order.
Yes.
I know the budget requires, I'm sorry, the budget requires a two-thirds majority. Do these amendments also require a two-thirds pass? So we can add amendments, add a majority, but at the end? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Sorry, do we have a motion in a second?
I have a question about that.
One second. Yeah, about his question?
No, I have a question about Counsel Green's amendment.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Is, is that, is the amendment that you're making, the $80,000, is that the, is that the, one of the recommendations in the menu from, from Brian? I, I wasn't sure if I was confusing the numbers there. Is that correct?
Do you want me to give more overview?
Yes, please.
Please do, yes.
So obviously, not divulging executive session conversations, but there, there has been interest in this position. We've heard it from a number of members of the public, of course, and now with the position being vacant, obviously, it's become a topic of consideration. I've been upfront with the council on options for this. We can, of course, keep the position and fill it with another Assistant City Manager. It could be divided up into two different positions, including a communications position, which I think the city, you know, badly needs. You know, or if there's real interest for savings and reductions, you know, on the council this year, the funding could be reduced, and it could be filled with, with, you know, a lower, you know, costing position, but accomplish some of the same duties. Administration's position is to, is to keep the funding, obviously, but we're, we're obviously also cognizant of the tax rate and wanting to work with the council and crafting a budget that's going to work for this council and for the citizens of Waterville. So there are a few options on the table. You know, all of them will, I think, still leave us in good position. But if, you know, if there is interest in a reduction, you know, administration will, of course, work within those bounds and do, you know, good work for the city. So there are, there are options. With, you know, the unfortunate, you know, Bill leaving, there is an opportunity to reevaluate the position and, of course, determine what funding level is, is appropriate, and that's done by the council. So that's just kind of an overview. I think there are a number of different opinions, but I think that's, that's where we are, if that helps for any public justification.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Klepak, does that satisfy your?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean.
I just want to circle back with you.
Counsel Green indicated $80,000 being pulled out to create the communications position. Is that, is that right? I'm sorry, I have a cold, I'm trying to get my brain to.
My amendment really had to do with a dollar amount, as opposed to a specific position. And I, I think that we start there, and then we see what makes the most sense with that kind of a budget to fill the needs that we have for the city.
Yeah, I will tell you, a communicator, if, if there is a reduction like this, a communications person is probably not for, for this year, but perhaps we can revisit in the future.
Counsel Gagnon?
I, I think I just feel like this is a little too early in this process to be making a decision on a big chunk of money. I was told the position is 180, the compensation for this position is $180,000. I'm trying to get us, at a tax, for us not to have a tax increase this year. And although I really like this, this idea and this motion, I, I think we need to, to look at other options to see where we might find some money and what the council might, you know, want to do. And anyway, so at some, I'm not going to do it now because I've already spoken, but at some point, I'll, I'll just move the table at the next meeting.
Counsel Green?
Could I just, I just want to clarify that of all of the options that we've presented with for cutting, I, this is my priority. So that's why I wanted to get it on the table first.
Okay, any, any other counsel comments with regard to Counsel Green's amendment of reducing, essentially, when going with the, the options that Brian spoke about, keeping the assistant as, splitting it into two with the same, and then, again, moving to third is cutting $80,000 of it and, and creating a different type of position that would help take some of the, the missing items off of, of where Bill was typically here. So we're choosing for option three.
Would this allocate eight, like, just to take the 80 grand and like, just like, throw it over here for like a rent? Like, when the council decides or to make a decision, like, what, so we're just going to take the 80 grand and just leave it right here in case we need it? It'll be removing it from the budget.
It's removing it from the budget, so it's not part of the, so essentially, the, the money would, if it was a $779,000, it would be 700, 699, whatever, change in what that budget, and would be reduced that way. So.
And this would be, it'd be precluding one of the positions, the, the, the new positions that are, were proposed by Brian.
Yes. You, so again, just, you know, you could keep the assistant manager within the, you know, the salary and benefits already allocated that, you know, Counsel Gagnon just spoke about. You could, in theory, split it into two positions, one that I think is very needed, you know, by the city. Or you could turn it into a lower, I'll call it a staff assistant or a special assistant level position that accomplishes many of the duties, but does not have managerial powers, obviously. But you could do that for, obviously, much less than paying for an Assistant City Manager. I think those are kind of the menu of options you're looking at.
And, and the second option would, would potentially include the role that you outlined in the third option, but it would additionally have 80 grand that would be allocated to some. to some.
It's within current budget, no more money, splitting into two positions instead of one.
Right. No, I get it. And that, that one of the positions would be similar to this position that you're describing in option three. The other half of that money would be for potentially a communications director or some other, say, whatever, our discretion.
Correct.
Gotcha, gotcha. And Councilor Green, you are proposing, you are proposing the option two, splitting it into two?
Option three.
Or you are suggesting option?
No, her amendment was for option three.
So, again, my, my proposal is a dollar amount. I think that what we can do with that is to have an assistant, a non managerial assistant position, right?
And just to be clear, if you're to cut eighty thousand dollars out, what we will get is a special assistant or a staff assistant. The communications person would be something to revisit in the future.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and now we're discussing this, this proposed amendment here.
Correct, yep. So, Tom, one second. Councilor McCormick, please.
Okay, for fat finger sitting here, just right now, the amend, the amendment, total administrative cost would drop it from seven hundred and eighty two thousand to seven hundred and two thousand. Administrative labor costs would drop from three hundred and seventy four down to three, no, four hundred and seventy four, would drop to three ninety four.
Okay.
Okay, as we're doing this, I'm penciling the changes in. So that, that's the number we're looking at. We're looking at seven hu, from seven hundred and eighty two to seven hundred and two. And down the road, we can determine what exactly we need for this communication person to be, get our head wrapped around it, what we want per dollar value, everything else. That's what we're at right now.
Correct.
That, I can't make it more simple than that. There's the, there's the numbers and what we want down the street. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen next month. Six months?
Yeah.
After Labor Day, probably.
Okay. Councilor Green?
Yeah, and just to be clear, I think the communications director would be a great idea. Again, it's, it's all about choices, and I would rather wait on the communications director than cut funding for the schools, or the library, or some of the other things we already have in the budget. But certainly, yeah, that's, that's what we need to decide.
Anyone else have any other comments at this point?
Well.
Councilor Klepek, go ahead.
All right. So now that, thank you for being patient with me while I wrapped my head around what's going on here. I have a lot of snot in my head at the moment. My broad perspective on the budget this year, one point five percent, I know I, that some councilors disagree with me, but, and are very eager to get to zero percent. To me, one point five percent seems very reasonable, and it seems like we're being, by doing that, we are being honest with the citizens of Waterville when we say, this is what, you know, there are incremental shifts in the cost of city administration. And rather than saying, oh, we're keeping the budget at zero for this year and creating that expectation for the future, which will obviously run into reality at some point, where we have to have a rapid increase in taxes, notwithstanding the recent experience of that here in Waterville as a result of the distortions caused by COVID. I think it is important to make sure that we are also capitalizing on the narrative in Waterville. So it's very easy for people to, to get a number, zero percent tax increase or one point five percent tax increase. You give them a number. But really, what I would like the people in Waterville to hear is a story about Waterville, not the, not the number. I mean, numbers are important, but a communications director is the kind of person that both implicitly and explicitly tells the story of Waterville as a vibrant, vital, revitalizing place that is trying to grow in, in sustainable ways that benefit everyone in the community, right? So explicitly by the, the job description, and then implicitly by the fact that it exists. It is a symbol. It is, it is a symbol, an outward symbol to the community, that we're, we're taking the future of Waterville very seriously, and we're, we're trying to put professionals in place that, that have that in mind. I understand it's easy to say, this isn't the year for tax increases. Well, it, it never feels like the year for a tax increase, but there are, the, the cost of running a city goes up with, with, with time. And the amount that we're going up is quite modest. So I think the, what we are getting in return for this, that, to me, this seems like a good investment of our resources. This is the kind of linchpin personnel. Maybe it, maybe I will not be persuasive enough for my other councilors, but I would say that this is the kind of person that needs to be here in Waterville. And whether we decide to do it this year or in the future, it need, it's a decision that needs to happen. And when you can do it with the fortuitous, you know, budget happenstance of a, a city man, an assistant city manager leaving and, and then liberating that budget line, it seems like an opportunity to take advantage of that. And I understand what Councilor Green is getting at, that she is very loathe to make cuts somewhere else in the spirit of compromise with some of the other councilors. But personally, I would like to hold fast on the, on the, on the budget line that, that we, we currently have. And using this opportunity to put a person, some personnel in place that is definitely needed in Waterville and can help tell the people of Waterville and the people not yet living in Waterville, but whom we want to live in Waterville, what the story of the city is. That's my perspective.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you taking the time to say that. That means a lot to me, and I think you're, you've said a lot of things that I think very well. So thank you very much for that perspective. Thank you.
I just want to say real quick again, just for the public's information also, none of the three options I just spoke about is adding any new spending to administration. This is all within existing or less. So we're not talking about any new money being added on to administration.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Councilor McCormick?
Based on your one hundred and sixteen thousand equals ten cent a tax rate, taking this eighty thousand dollars off just took cents, six cents away.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nancy Sanford is on the line. Shall I allow her to ask her question now?
We're still, we're still having a, I mean, there's our amendment on the table.
Yeah, 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 let's, absolutely. One, one second. We haven't forgotten about Nancy. Anyone else with regard to this amendment?
Unless she wants to comment on this specific amendment, of course.
Oh, that's a good question. Still a moment of clarity in your fog, Councilor Klepek. I appreciate that. Can we, yeah, can we bring her in to, to see if she's commenting on this particular amendment?
Nancy, can you hear us okay?
I can.
So Nancy, I just have a quick, quick question. Are you, is your hand raised to speak about this particular conversation with regard to the amendment of cutting eighty thousand dollars out of the one hundred and eighty, or are you want to?
What I, what I want to speak about is the assistant manager position specifically. So if now's the time, fine. If not, I'll wait.
Well, I would say that given that one of the, one of the options is actually keeping the position, I would think that this would be a good opportunity to, to.
But just to be clear, this amendment would disallow the assistant city manager position? If this amendment passes, the position is gone.
Correct. So I think that's why it's inappropriate for her to speak at this juncture with regard to her position on keeping the city man, or the position. All right. So go ahead, Nancy. You've got three minutes. Go.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
All right. So, so at the moment, the position is still there. The assistant city manager is still there. Is that correct? Or not?
At this moment, correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. I, I, and I think I heard Brian say that his first choice was to keep that position. Am, am I understanding you correctly, Brian?
To keep the funding, that's correct.
Okay. I think that a managerial level position as an assistant to the city manager is imperative right now. A lot for the reasons that Tom talked about. And I think it's perhaps short sighted, I do think it's short sighted, to get rid of a position that is a help to our city manager in this time when we're, you know, saying, you know, Waterville, we're, you know, we have a new vision and, you know, come and see us, come live here. I just think that, that if we, if we get rid of the assistant city manager position, I guess I wonder if we'll ever get it back if we were to decide that, oh geez, we maybe shouldn't have done that. So that's, that's my comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Nancy. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Patty?
No.
Anyone in the public wish to speak with regard to this amendment? Anyone else from the council? Councilor Gagnon?
Move the table to sit them for, until our next meeting.
Table the amendment.
Point, what are?
Table the amendment.
Is that possible?
Yeah, in order to entertain any, any conversation regarding table, we need a second.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Now we can have a discussion.
No, we can't.
Oh.
Tabled motions are not available.
Oh.
Vote.
All right. So now we vote on whether or not we want to table this amendment until the next budget, the next council meeting on the eighteenth of June.
Why are we, can I, can you elaborate on why we want to table?
No. So just say no, if you want.
All right, cool. No.
Councilor Gilli?
No, there you go. Thank you.
Councilor DeBrito?
So, okay, we, so we're just going to table just this part right here, not the whole budget?
Correct.
The whole budget?
No.
Just this amendment.
Just this amendment.
Okay. I, yes. Table.
Councilor Klepek?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
I'm going to vote yes.
Councilor Gagnon?
Yes.
Councilor Finch?
No.
Councilor McCormick?
To table this is to table the budget conversation.
No.
For all intent and purpose.
Negative. Yeah. No, just this, just this, just this one section. Thank you.
Vote is four in favor and three opposed, so it's tabled.
All right. So we are moving on to just regular conversation with regard to the budget. Any councilors wish to make any conversation, any comments with regard to the budget? Councilor Gagnon?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we accept all of the items that were in the manager's list that actually he returned, he sent to us again today, I think.
Mm-hmm.
With three exceptions on that list. I would, there are two police vehicles on the list, and I'd like to make that just one for eighty four hundred dollars. I think we should keep the bulky waste pickup. That's a service for citizens. And I'd want to keep the part-time positions for the library. So that's my motion. I'm not sure what the total, I don't, I'm not sure what it then comes up to, but all the other items, take those recommended cuts.
So it was one police, police vehicle?
Okay.
Keep the two part-time, three part-time library positions.
Right.
Correct. And what was the third one?
Keep the bulky waste.
Bulky waste.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Can we get a, oh, no. So let's have a discussion with regard to that.
So is it worth for the public reading what would be eliminated from the budget?
Yes.
I think it would help, yes. Go.
Absolutely.
So with this, what would be eliminated is the Public Works plow driver. We would eliminate thirty five thousand dollars to promote marketing and festivals in the city budget under administration. We would eliminate the salt priority initiative that Public Works has promoted. We would eliminate three thousand dollars for equipment for the city clerk. We would drop seven thousand five hundred dollars for network maintenance and moving fiber to new poles and IT. We would eliminate three thousand dollars for membership of the mayor's coalition. We would drop ten thousand dollars for vehicle maintenance for emergency vehicles of the fire department. We would drop thirty thousand dollars for Public Works parts and equipment. And we would eliminate a twenty thousand dollar subsidy for kids at parks and rec there. So that was totaling three hundred and forty five thousand, of course, minus the, the three items that Councilor Gagnon mentioned.
That was your list.
That was the list that was provided.
Yeah.
I'll speak to my motion.
Any discussion?
We'll see what he says.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to get to a point again where, you know, we've had this robust discussion about adding, you know, one position, two posi, not adding, but one position, two position, you know, all, again, within city hall. And I'm trying to get us to where we can tell people in the city that this is not the year for a tax increase. There was a big tax increase last year. There was a revow that created a big increase for a number of people. And again, I'm trying to get us where, again, with the highest mill rate in the county. And if we can keep it, keep the, the increase, not the budget, but the increase at a zero, at zero, then we're going to close the gap. Because it's my understanding that all of our surrounding communities have increased their taxes and their mill rate. So it just kind of closes that gap a little bit more to try to keep the middle class here and to try to get people to select Waterville if they come, if they have to come to this area. Right now, you know, I, I hear about it all the time. So I didn't necessarily pick these items, but they were what the manager suggested, with these exceptions that I made. I've also got some ideas about revenues, if we want to head that way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to, just to know, this is certainly a menu of options we provided. I can't say city staff is. I can't say city staff is necessarily recommending all of these cuts, but it is, it is a menu of options for you to choose from that are certainly viable, viable options. You know, I will just say on the city's behalf that without this list, we are at only a forty-two thousand dollar increase over the last year. So by adopting this list, we're actually going to be three hundred thousand dollars under where we currently are with the city budget. So that's, you know, that, that's pretty significant. You know, I will just say on behalf of Public Works, the salt priority would have been a really important issue for the city to clean up our roads for half the year and to move to a system that basically every other community our size has gone to a long time ago. That was, you know, fairly important. Doesn't mean we can't do it in the future. We could look at it again. But I think the city was, you know, previous to this, already with forty-two thousand dollars over last year, already in a, in a very good position, especially looking at what the county did and others this year. So they're all certainly options, but I just want to be clear that, you know, city staff isn't necessarily recommending these, but they're certainly viable options. Thank you.
Council Finch, you have a question?
Go.
So I have said that my, my biggest position on the budget is that whether there's a tax increase or no tax increase, I want a responsible budget. And these cuts are not responsible. These cuts are cuts for the sake of making cuts. As the mayor said, the city's share of this one and a half percent increase right now is only forty thousand dollars. You know, with, with the schools and the county making up the rest. And I just don't think it's, it's responsible to just slash for the sake of slashing to get us to zero. I think there are other places, if we were having a conversation about making cuts, that would be better, not necessarily that I would propose this year. I think eliminating the assistant city manager would have been a good start towards responsible government. But, you know, in speaking directly to, to these positions, you know, when Public Works was here and there was a discussion of, well, if you, you know, you proposed two positions and you said you wanted this full-time equipment operator. And, you know, Matt Skahan had said that our plowing right now is not happening in the timeframes that are recommended to state standards. And having this full-time equipment operator to help with plowing will alleviate the, I can't remember his exact hours that he said that we were off, but it would, it would close that gap and put us more in line with state standards, and it would reduce the stress on the current team over at Public Works. You know, for, for eliminating marketing, I, if, if we're not going to have a communications position, it just seems absolutely absurd that we would eliminate any type of marketing for the city. You know, the city manager talked about the salt priority. You know, for, for elections equipment, elections are getting more and more, I don't want to say complex, I'm not really sure what word I'm looking for here. Huh?
Dangerous.
I don't know. No, dangerous isn't the word I want to use. Intense, I guess, we'll go with. And I know that this elections equipment greatly helps to alleviate that. You know, and eliminating us in the mayor's coalition, I, that's just shooting ourselves in the foot despite our face at this point. You know, and reducing EMS vehicle maintenance, again, that's just shooting ourselves in the foot for, for, for really no good, no good reason. And, you know, I've said in the past when talking about the budgets in, in prior years when we were in less of a sound fiscal situation as we are now, that delayed maintenance just compounds over time. So we shouldn't be eliminating anything right now about, you know, maintenance, and we should be keeping that. And, you know, Council Gagnon, you and I have a talks in which you want the city to, to do things for the public. So I'm just uncertain as to why, in terms of the government servicing the people, you would cut a subsidy that allows low-income children to participate in sports. And so this, these are not responsible cuts. These are cuts for the sake of cuts, and I can't support this.
Anyone else?
I, you know, I, I, I agree with Council Finch, specifically with the, with the rec program subsidy. I mean, these kids need an outlet, and sometimes they don't have that opportunity. And then, you know, if we cut this, they're, they're just, they're left in the lurch. So I, and then, of course, you know, is, again, trying to eliminate the, you know, the, reduce the EMS vehicle maintenance, I mean, yeah, we can say that until you need it, and then it breaks down the side of the road on your way to your house. It's, you know, it's much to our chagrin. So. You know, it's, it's, it's tough, but I agree. This isn't, this isn't responsible for the city of Waterville, and that's why we're all here. What's best for the city of Waterville? And, you know, and yeah, budget season is, is a tough one, but we got to, we got to do it the right way.
Thank you. Council Green?
Yeah, I, I also agree with Council Finch, Councilors Finch and Gilly. Just to put this in perspective as well, what we're talking about with a one and a half percent increase, which is what we have now currently in the budget that's before us, is depending on slight variations in the mill rate, approximately thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollars of, of valuation, right? So it will mean someone with a, a house that's worth a hundred thousand dollars would pay thirty dollars additional. That seems like having bulky waste pickup, better snow removal, all of these things, is, that's a deal. So I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
Anyone else? Council Gagnon?
Yeah, again, this is, when you talk about cuts, this is exactly the discussion we get into, you know, we could spend hours and hours talking about picking things out of budgets and try to save some money. I believe there's enough money in this overall budget that we can avoid the tax increase in the city. And even though it might only be thirty dollars, it's on top of that very already high rate. And each year, there's just a little bit more and a little bit more, time after time.
You're not asking the schools.
So, you know, this is exactly what happens when you talk about cuts. You know, I've got some other ideas in terms of revenues, but, you know, if it's not the will of the council to cut this budget, then it's, you know, these items, which is, which was prepared and presented to us, not necessarily as a recommendation from the manager, but from him. I didn't agree with some of them, obviously. And we can go into other areas, but not if we're going to go through this. You know, if there isn't a desire, you know, to prevent a tax increase. Because like I said, anything we can, any of us can suggest to be cut. I heard somebody talking about today about cutting the school budget. And how's that going to go? So.
Council Clepack?
We're here to do the heavy, heavy lifting.
Thank you, Mayor. I, just to add a fourth voice to the chorus here, I won't, you know, the, my colleagues have already enumerated the reasons that these particular cuts are a bad idea. So I won't, I won't do that. I'm, I'm simply wanted to address the point that, which is worth addressing, I think, that, that Council Gagnon made of his goal of trying to attract residents to Waterville, you know, within the broader, the, the market of tax rates in the, in the, in the, in the broader region. That is something to think about. However, it begs the question, what are the priorities of the kinds of people we want moving to Waterville? Yes, everybody would like to pay sustainable tax rates, right? But personally, I want to live in a community with people that, for example, just with the salt, that value the environment, that value the impacts that municipal road salting has on, on the environment and, and silt distribution in the many streams here in Waterville. I want to live with people that value access to recreational activities for lower-income children. I, I want to live in a town that has what shouldn't, I, I don't think they're irresponsible or radical. The word progressive may be a dirty word to some people, but they do feel like, you know, progress in, in terms of a community. These kinds of cuts that this menu was, was put there as a menu. And I never go into a restaurant and order the entire menu, right? So you, you did take a few things off the menu, but rather than, you know, when I, when I, this feels regressive to me. These kinds of cuts feels very regressive to me and is the wrong kind of, it's, it's the wrong message that the council is sending with the budget. The budget process is a message that we send to the, the residents here in Waterville and to the broader community, as Council Gagnon suggests, like, come and move to, to Waterville. Certainly, I want, I want to live with people that value getting a good deal for their taxes, that don't have exorbitant tax rates. But is that the highest priority for new residents coming to Waterville? I want, I want people who have the, the wherewithal to be able to support thirty dollars on a hundred thousand dollars for what seems like a, a, a very reasonable menu of services that they're getting from the municipality. That, that's my, my thought on it, and I, why I, I'm, I'm going to vote against this amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, Patty? Anyone in the?
I got a, I got a question. So, and this is for the city managers. So how did we come up with this list? How did this list come about?
So most of this list is, is new spending for this year. So, for example, the, you know, the library positions, the rest of these lines, most, not all of them, were proposed by the department's increases to those lines. For example, the vehicle maintenance and the equipment, parts and service just cost more now for our vehicles. And so these were, these are lines that were increased. So when you see these, these amounts, it's mostly above what was in the budget in the current fiscal year. That's what most of this list is, and that's where it was generated. It wasn't generated because we were specifically targeting these particular areas, but it's, it's lines that were increased over last year.
And how would, how would it affect the city by cutting, like, majority of, like, all of these cuts? How would that affect the city?
Well, obviously, it means we need to make operations happen within existing budgets or less, which, you know, becomes more of a challenge when we're all faced with inflation and things cost more. And obviously, you know, we will, we'll work within the bounds we have and make do with what we have. But these were increases put forward by a number of different departments based on what they were seeing for prices and other maintenance costs. You know, the salt priority, for example, is an initiative that Public Works has been researching and has put forward based on the feedback from, you know, all the other communities that do this, which is pretty much everyone. So that's, that's kind of a new initiative there. But, so that's where this list came from. It wasn't administration saying, you know, these things are not important, or we're targeting these things specifically. It's mostly lines that are over and above what was in the budget for the current year.
Thank you.
Okay. You may. Yes, please.
Cindy Jacobs, representing the Waterville Public Library. The positions at the library are the part-time positions that are replacement positions. You guys probably already know our library has not fully reopened. When we had COVID, we had to lay, you know, two-thirds of the staff off. These are replacement positions. We haven't replaced them until we're trying to do it this year. So they are not new. And I just want everyone to make sure they understand that. Does anybody have any questions about it? Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments with regard to this amendment? David?
David Johnson, still a word for. So I was one of the people that, you know, got a nice hefty forty percent tax increase last year. I'm, I'm happy with, I heard one and a half to two, so I came into this meeting thinking, oh, it's going to be two percent. Inflation's higher than two percent. The minimum wage in the state of Maine went up more than two percent this year. Social Security cost of living adjustment was three point two percent, right? So this is, this is already a good number. And by cutting all of this stuff, especially, well, from any of the budgets, you're really devaluing my tax dollars. And, and that's going to compound, it's already been spoken about, people, the city employees having to do more with less. That's going to make them more stressed out. They're going to get burnt out easier. It's just devaluing my tax dollars by cutting services. And I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you.
Phil Boffea, word two. I was watching online. I say I probably should come over here and say a couple of words. Council Gagnon, I appreciate your, your efforts in trying to keep taxes low. I was one of those people who was hit with a, almost a hundred percent increase in taxes last year, right? And I just feel like, you know, the council say, oh, we want to invite more people in the community. We want to get more people to move into the city. And what about the people who live here already, right? I don't think that anybody wants to move in the city where taxes are, what the city government sends as a message that says, we're just here to spend money, right? And we spend regardless of what the people think and the people say in the community. Well, I think last year, we collected enough money from the people of Waterville to last us at least two or three years without having to raise the taxes. I truly believe, because I called the city assessor and I talked with them, and they say, yes, we, all the money that we collected, we did not spend. We kept a bunch of it. That means that we didn't have to actually collect that amount of money last year. But we did it in the guise of, it's a city reevaluation. It has nothing to do with the city council. We're just going to jack people's taxes up. Okay? So not raising the taxes for one or two years, I think, is responsible for the city to do that, right? I was pretty surprised by Council Finch one of these days saying that, what is actual return on investment from the city continuing to increase city government? What are we getting? I can tell you as a citizen, I don't see any benefit from me paying double the amount of taxes that I was paying a couple of years ago. Maybe some people are seeing it, but I'm not seeing it. I am not, right? We had a city manager before that was, I believe, double the age of our city, current city manager, and he did the job for a really long time by himself. You know, he had his ways, you know, people disagreed with him, but he did the job. We don't need a new assistant manager. We do not. We do not. We do not need that position. There's, is it positioned to cut from the budget? And, and like Council Gagnon said before, right, like, people will come and ask you for money. It's your job to be able to say no. That's your job. And you should try. It's not because somebody asked that it should get. We, 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 we don't want to have the reputation to be a city who just is there to spend money just because it's available from people's pockets. I try to make my life better, to increase the amount of money that I make, right? And my efforts to better my life and my family lives seem to be dwarfed by the efforts of the council to continue to reach into my pocket to take my money. I am, I can spend my money in the community. I know how to do it. I don't need the city government to spend it on my behalf. I would like for some of it to stay in my pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul? Paul?
Paula Raymond, Ward 7. I've been coming to city council meetings for almost nine years. This is my ninth year. Nine years ago, I felt we were in a hole and probably not able to dig out. And then we got new management, new assistant management. I started to join committees, tried to pay attention and understand how the city functions. And we're finally getting out of the hole, and it's cost us money to do that. I don't like spending my money. Ask my husband. I don't. I prefer that taxes don't go up. Gary and I, he's retired, I'm an educator. I've been around for about 30 years doing that. And taxes isn't the reason why people don't come and live in this community and buy homes. They want quality education. They want clean streets. They want to know that when they have an emergency, someone's going to be there for them. And that's what I felt was lacking nine years ago. But that's what I feel all of you and our new city manager and everybody has been working toward to make happen. It breaks my heart that Bill Post is leaving because he really did a tremendous job while he was here. And now Mr.
Kanan. Brian.
compliments that and will continue that process. No one wants taxes to go up. And I'm so grateful that most of you here are suggesting that you won't vote on this amendment because it's just going to tank. Anything that was mentioned that is a possibility to take away financially, in my opinion, and it's a humble opinion, I always say I'm just Paula, it hurts somebody somewhere. And how do we justify that? How do we justify hurting somebody somewhere? When what you're working to do is to improve the city so that people hear about the quality education, the clean streets, the retail that you all are still working toward bringing in? Those are the things that attract people, and they'll pay the taxes because they're getting what they want. That's what I've heard over time. Unless you're talking to elderly people who really do suffer in that way. But we work at finding ways to help them too. I think 1.5%, compared to what happened last year, certainly is a miniscule amount. If you don't want me to pay it, I won't, be happy to put it in my bank account. But I really hope that, we're very careful. There was, two weeks ago, two gentlemen sitting in the back, police officers, and something came up about cutting positions. And I'm thinking, they're going home and they're going to start a resume. And why wouldn't they, right? So I do hope that you vote to not cut taxes, cut the budget that, the way you're talking. Especially the little people, the $30,000 on the children.
Thank you.
No. So thank you for listening.
Okay. All right, can we get a roll call for this amendment, please?
Counselor Gilli?
No.
Counselor DeBrito?
No.
Counselor Klepak?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
No.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
Vote is one in favor and six opposed.
Okay. All right. We are back to, any? All right, so we are back to any discussion at this point with regard to the appropriation of the municipal and school budget. Is there any other amendments that people want to float out there this evening? Or any other discussion that we want to have with regard to this? If not, we will move that to a first reading of the budget.
At the next council meeting, could we offer amendments at that time?
Of course.
Because I have, I'm not going to.
Okay, fair enough.
Question?
Yes.
So we are moving this without none of the reduction, is that correct?
Correct. Correct. So this is, right, this is the first reading as it's written at this point. We had two options that were both, one was tabled and the other one was just voted no. So if there's any other discussions that want to take place at this point to speak about the budget as it's written right now, then this would be the time where we will just simply vote on the budget as it's written at this point, and we will be back here on the 18th to take the second and final vote.
So voting on this tonight, voting yes on this means that you're supporting a tax increase?
That is one, that's my vote.
Okay.
Of one and a half percent, yes.
Counselor Finch, do you have something you want to add before we?
Yes, and I'm not going to make the amendment now because I have to figure out how to make it. But I will be making an amendment in two weeks with regards to the economic coordinator position. I just, I can't, I've been trying to figure out how to phrase it, and I can't. So I just, just to let the rest of the council know that that'll be coming.
Okay, we will be in suspense for two weeks for that, so I am excited. Counselor DeBrito?
Okay, so I'm like a little unclear with this. So now we are at 1.5, without the $80,000, that's just sitting off to the side.
There's no, there's nothing, no changes have been made to this budget whatsoever.
But if we do make the change.
That was tabled.
Correct.
Until next meeting, but it will come back to the budget.
Yes. It was tabled, right?
It's in the budget still, it's, nothing's been removed from the budget.
You're basically voting on the budget as is, no changes as presented currently stands.
Something, okay.
And just to be clear again, that 1.5 is an estimate. Obviously, this will be closer to committing taxes, a number of factors go into that, determining overlay, you know, homestead exemption, Betty, there are a number of factors. But it's estimated right now about 1.5%, but it could be, if overlay needs to be a little bit more, it could be closer to 2%, but somewhere in that range, that's the projection.
Okay. Counselor Klepak, yes?
Yeah, so if we had an interest in taking the city manager position and breaking it into two positions.
To be clear, the assistant city manager position.
Doing that. Well, let me know.
We're not going to split Brian's position into two positions, but yes.
Just let me know if I need to come back.
And the fog is back.
Right. The assistant city manager position, if we wanted to split that into two, that could happen either tonight or that amendment could easily be introduced.
You would just need to leave it as is, leave the funding alone. Don't do anything to it.
Correct.
Oh, I got you. And then we could write those job descriptions as we see fit.
Correct.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. All right, I'm ready.
Okay. We're ready, I believe.
Okay, maybe I'm not.
Counselor DeBrito?
Okay.
No, this is fine. This is important.
I just need to clarify all of this. So voting no, what would mean voting no on this? So could I be just be voting no at that 1.5?
You would be voting no on the budget as it's written at this point, correct?
The entire budget, you'd be voting no. You'd be voting no on the fiscal year '25 annual budget.
Correct.
Unless you have an amendment that you'd like to bring forward to reconcile it with something that would make you vote yes?
No, not at the time.
Okay. Okay. Patty?
Yes, sir.
Please. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon? Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes. Bless you.
That was a sneeze and not a reaction to the vote. I want to go on the record, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we are moving on to ordinance 116, 2024.
amend the zoning map, 37 Armory Road.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And for clarification, Patty, can you just, what, this is, give us a brief overview of what this is, please?
It's amending the zoning map for 37 Armory Road, resoning from general industrial and commercial C to commercial C in its entirety.
Okay, okay. Correct.
This is the rental, this is.
We sent this to the planning board, they made the decision, they're coming back. Okay, fair enough, awesome, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And I believe you also have an engineer here representing, Mr. Bigford, correct?
Oh, okay, well, fair enough. I mean, do we have, is there any questions with regard to this? I mean, I think it was pretty clear with the council before when we sent it to them, what they were doing and we commended them on the work they were doing to clean the property up. We were just going through the channels. Anyone have any concerns at this point?
Absolutely none. To reiterate what I said last meeting, I mean, what they've done is remarkable to that property.
I agree.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
Yeah, it's remarkable.
All right. Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to ordinance 117, 2024.
amend the administrative ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this, as I read, okay, this is to, we've spoke about the council meeting times in several conversations and had several things to say, folks, both in the community and on the council. So the proposal for this is to move the meeting's time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM going forward. So any discussion from the council with regard to this amendment? Administrative ordinance?
If it allows us to not have to sit here for 200 years, I'm totally for it.
199 it is, perfect.
When will it go into effect?
That's a fantastic question.
After, an ordinance change takes two readings, so after the second reading, it goes into effect 21 days.
So we're talking with the first, like, I would say the first week of August, or the first meeting in August?
The second week, the second, first, second, it takes two.
Yeah.
21 days.
21 days, the first meeting in August.
Counselor Klepak?
So I don't really care about this that much, and I'm happy to go along with what people want. But I will say that as a parent who is principally responsible for making dinner and feeding his family, even having it at 7 o'clock, sometimes it's a little bit hard for me to, like, get all that in before that 7 o'clock hour. Pushing it to 6 o'clock is going to, you know, it's like prime time dinner time. I don't know what to say. I don't like being here on city council till 10 o'clock at night myself, but what's the rationale? Can you give me the rationale for this? I mean, I'll go along with it if people are really into it, but.
I mean, wouldn't it be, you know, exactly what you said, Tom, is to prevent, you know, we all have to work in the morning, and getting out of here at, you know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, that's real late. So if we start an hour earlier, we could possibly get out of here a little sooner.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, yeah, sure, I'll go along with it.
Oh, no, I got Tom's rationale. I'm trying to get out of work and get other things taken care of before I come to this, and 7 o'clock was a convenient time. But if the majority's going to go with 6, I will have to cook the books and make things happen so that I'm here at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yeah, just one thing to add. I believe the intent of this would be to always start at the same time, regardless of whether there was a public hearing. Sometimes we've started earlier than 7, but this way, it would always be, we'd be starting at 6, and then we go from there.
Whether it's a public hearing first.
Hey, if you want to speak, wait, you need to address, hold on one second.
And that's really a question, just to clarify, that that's what we're talking about, right? Just always starting at 6, whether there's a public hearing first or whatever.
I mean, I, okay, I don't know, I mean.
I would, well, I would advocate for that because.
Sure, I mean, I think we try to do the best we can to start at reasonable times depending on the topics that we're talking about, so. If it's something that would require, I mean, taken on a case-by-case basis. Counselor Finch?
I just want to echo what Counselor Green said and that, you know, Mr. Mayor, you know my opposition to starting things earlier. I think it prevents public participation from someone who shows up at the regular meeting time and then finds out, oh, no, it's moved. I think starting earlier, starting at 6:00 PM alleviates all of that. Whether there's a public hearing or not, just starting at 6 just gives complete consistency to the public about what the city is doing. So I support this.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Sure.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
I love you all, take care.
Thank you.